It being 7:40 Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. First order of the business is to call of order. Want to call your name, please respond. Present, Councilor Brooks.
Present.
Councilor Craig Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz.
Present.
Councilor Harder.
Present.
Councilor Heath.
Present.
Councilor Haglund.
Present.
Councilor Kozinskius.
Present.
Councilor Math.
Present.
Councilor Thibault Munoz.
Present.
Councilor Tisoni.
Present.
And President Tyrus is absent. So we have 10 councils present, one absent. In absence of Council President Tyrus, the first order of business, the election of President Pro Tem for this evening, February 18th, 2025. At this time, I now open, I now order the office of the City Council to open the order for this election of President Pro Tem. Any nominations? Councilor Darrell Lowitz.
I nominate Elizabeth Kozinskius, seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Darrell Lowitz, seconded by Councilor Haglund. Are there any other nominations for President Pro Tem?
Move to close the nominations.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Darrell Lowitz, seconded by Councilor Math to close the nominations. All in favor, may I say aye?
Madam Clerk, I'll accuse myself.
Okay.
Point of order?
Yep.
Councilor Tisoni, are all roll call votes? If not, roll call votes tonight.
One second. Okay, to close the nominations, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas to close nominations. I will call the roll of members. Please state the names of the council of your choice. Councilor Brooks?
Counselor Elizabeth Kozinskius.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Harder?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Heath?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Haglund?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Math?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Counselor Kozinskius.
Councilor Tisoni? I have nine votes for Councilor Kozinskius is now elected President Pro Tem for this
Please rise to your side to the opening ceremony. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we pray that He bring us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us towards the achievement of good in government. We pray that He bless and protect all people in our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may be deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, liberty and justice for And as of the open meeting recordings, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30, subsection 20. Is there discussion? I mean, is there anyone recording tonight's meeting? We will begin with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings. December 16th, 2024, regular meeting. January 6th, 2025, regular meeting. Councilor Cormier?
Move to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as printed.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Cormier, seconded by Councilor Heath to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. There are no public hearings, there are no communications from the mayor, there are no petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, reports of standing committees. At this time, we're going to take out of order, and we're going to begin with the Appointments Committee with item 11472 on page 2 of our agenda. Item 11472, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Oliver to the position of City Engineer for term expiring January 16th, 2025. Councilor Haglund?
Thank you, Counselor Kozinskius. I move to remove the item from our agenda, as we were not able to meet on that tonight as our appointments.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Haglund, seconded by Councilor Darrell Lowitz to remove the item from the agenda. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11473, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Christine Oliver Kumar to the position of City Assessor for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. We met on this item tonight as the Appointments Committee. You know, Ms. Kumar has been with us for three years now. It's gone quickly, but in that time, she's made a great impact on the department and the City Assessor role. She has come highly recommended for her professionalism, her efficiency, her innovative nature in streamlining processes and making things happen quickly, and also for her constituent service work. It's not always easy when people are upset about maybe their assessments or other bills that come their way, but she handles things really well and professionally. She's also a resident of Gardner and very committed to the role and to the city. And so, having no objection, the Appointments Committee was in favor, and so I move to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Haglund, seconded by Councilor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11483, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Eric McAvine to the position of Police Chief for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Heath.
Thank you, Madam President.
President Pro Tem.
Yes, we, the Appointments Committee met with Chief McAvine earlier today. The chief has 30 years of experience in policing, 25 of which was, well, which is here at Gardner. He was hired as a patrol officer for the Gardner Police Department in April of 2000, was promoted to Sergeant April of '05. February 2012, he became a lieutenant, and 10 years later, he became the police chief. The chief has stabilized and strengthened the Gardner Police Department during his tenure at this position. He currently has a department at 100% staff, pending this last training that goes through with a well-diverse staff, which includes officers that are bilingual. The Appointments Committee was in favor. We voted unanimously, and we would like to go ahead and have the, have this in front of the full council as a whole and pass.
Motion made by Councilor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment, seconded by Councilor Haglund. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Haglund?
I just want to echo what Counselor Heath said. We had this meeting earlier this evening, and I think it's really clear that Chief McAvine, you know, has helped stem turnover and balance out the staffing, that there's really good supports and accountability within the department, that trainings are offered. We talked a lot about the critical incident training for mental health, training that the officers have gone through, which built, I think, a pretty significant need. And after the schools, it's the second largest department, and I think our biggest, one of our biggest ones on the budget anyway, that he oversees and does it very, very well. So I'm fully in favor of confirming this appointment.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11484, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Nicholas Maroni to the position of Deputy Chief of Police for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Heath.
Thank you, Madam President. The Appointments Committee met with Deputy Chief Maroni earlier this evening. Deputy Chief Maroni completed his, well, his three-year appointment in this position. He began in 2010 and has worked his way up through the ranks from a patrol officer, sergeant, and most recently as the department's community policing lieutenant. He has always been actively involved in the community through several different nonprofit outreach and service organizations. I'm looking forward to him continuing that work in this role. Since his first appointment, he also graduated from the FBI's National Police Academy. This is a prestigious, competitive, and hard accomplishment to earn. I think he is one of three officers that have went through this for Gardner. With that being said, the committee, the committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move this appointment to be certified.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Heath, seconded by Councilor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11488, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Tina Sprega, trustee to the position of Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund for term expiring January 15th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. The Appointments Committee met on this item also this evening. This is a reappointment, as we all know, or many of us I'm sure know, Tina was the former president and CEO of GFA, so she brings a lot of excellent financial expertise to this committee and to the Rockwell Gift Fund. But also, she knows the community very well, having worked here for so long. She still serves on boards and committees through GFA, so she's still active in our community. And when she was president and CEO, I know she had the opportunity of starting the Student Advisory Council, so she's had that chance to work with students and hear from them directly about their experiences as young adults in our community. She is also a graduate of Gardner High. Counselor Brooks reminded me this evening, class of 73. It's an unpaid volunteer position. I think we're lucky to have her expertise on that group. The mayor highly recommended it. We had no objections, and so I move the appointment to be confirmed.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Haglund, seconded by Councilor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11489, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Autumn Brown to the position of Animal Control Officer for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with Ms. Autumn Brown earlier today, along with Chief McAvine was there with her, and he spoke highly of her services. She's been here for just over a year, and this is a reappointment, which the initial appointment was one year, which this right here is now three years. And he couldn't do nothing but rave about her. I think he used the term as a spitfire. She's all, she is a remarkable employee, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move this appointment to be certified.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Heath, seconded by Councilor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11490, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Alana Meserve to the position of Animal Control Officer for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. Alana Meserve, the committee met with her earlier today at the meeting right before this meeting, and she, again, just like the previous item, or Animal Control Officer, she is a, she is part of a three-person team over there at the ACO, the Animal Control Officers, and again, came highly recommended from both the chief and the deputy chief. Again, this is a, this was a one-year appointment. Now that, that is getting reappointed for three years. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move this appointment to be certified.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Heath, seconded by Councilor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11491, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Cheryl Slack to the position of Animal Control Officer for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this, just like the last two items, we met with, well, she was not able to go ahead and make it today, but we met with Chief, Chief McAvine, and he went ahead and he spoke in her behalf and said that she is, again, highly recommended like the last two. With that being said, we went ahead and we voted unanimously to go ahead and recommend this appointment to be certified.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Heath, seconded by Councilor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. Item 11496, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Anne Hurst to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from the Appointments Committee, Councilor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. Again, the Appointments Committee met this evening earlier on this item. While Commissioner Hurst was not able to be there, I think most of us that know her know that she lives and breathes these issues. She has years and years of experience advocating for people with disabilities. She has personal connections to this. I know I first met her when I was working at the State House, and in that capacity of as being an advocate for people with disabilities. And so I think we're, again, really lucky to have her expertise and skills and knowledge on this commission. She is highly recommended by the mayor, and so we were in favor of this appointment, and so I move the appointment to be confirmed.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilor Haglund, seconded by Councilor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darrell Lowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kozinskius?
Yes.
Councilor Math?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Councilor Tisoni?
Yes.
10 yeas, the motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in those who have been appointed here this evening. We will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed and call the meeting back to order Christine Kumar has been chosen to assess taxes and estimate value property for the purpose of taxation for the City of Gardner, but you have to turn, do swear that you would truly and impartially, according to the best of skills and judgment, assess and operation all such taxes as you may during the time assess, that you will neither overvalue or nor undervalue any properties subject to taxation, and will faithfully perform the duties of assessor. I do. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. I state your name.
I, Eric McAvine.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
And comment upon me.
And comment upon me.
As the Police Chief for the City of Gardner.
As the Police Chief for the City of Gardner.
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And will uphold and defend.
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will obey and be bound.
I will obey and be bound.
By such rules and regulations.
By such rules and regulations.
By the City of Gardner.
By the City of Gardner.
And its Police Department.
And its Police Department.
I state your name.
I, Eric McAvine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I would never betray my badge.
That I would never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will uphold the Constitution.
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the Gardner Police Department.
And the Gardner Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Eric McAvine.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
Of Chief of Police for the City of Gardner.
Of Chief of Police of the City of Gardner.
I state your name.
I, Nicholas Maroni.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear truth.
That I will bear truth.
Faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
The meeting is back in order. We are now going to go, again, out of order to the Economic and Community Development Committee, item 11500 on the third page of our council agenda. Item 11500, our request from Counselor Elizabeth Kozinskius for a one-month update from the Director of Community Development and Planning. Is there a motion? Councilor Heath?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the item be placed on file, and the Director of Community Development and Planning brief the council on his one-month results. Sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, seconded by Counselor Darryl Lowitz to place the item on file and for the Director of Community Development and Planning to brief the City Council on his one-month update. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Maff?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Counselor Tisone?
Yeah.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. So per that motion passing, at this time, I'd like to ask Director of Community Planning and Development, Jason Stevens, to come up to the podium and give the council a briefing on his one-month update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Protam. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to give this update on the work of my department. As I said on the eve of my first day when I last spoke to the council, among my top priorities are going to be increasing transparency and communication with the work of my department. I want to thank those of you who I've found time with to meet, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the rest of you moving forward. It's been almost a month since I've been in this role, and a lot of that time has been spent getting up to speed with the workings of the department and the numerous projects and programs that we're involved with. The good news is that there's a lot underway that I think we can all be excited about, a lot of good opportunities for growth and development here in Gardner. Among this good news, there are a few problems that I feel I need to go over with you all tonight. First, I want to give an update on the administration for the CDBG program. I reviewed what the council looked at last year and the issues that came to light at that time in terms of the reporting errors. Prior to my arrival, the auditor and treasurer have been reviewing the reporting for CDBG, CDBG programs, and their records and reports. I want to be clear on the next couple of points. First, all money we have received for CDBG has been properly allocated and spent. No money is unaccounted for. However, we have identified errors in our reports made to the state, and there were also errors, reporting errors, made to housing and urban development as well. For background, how the CDBG program works, we receive our annual allotment amount and through our process allocate those funds. We then advance money to the program, which is then reimbursed by the state once those reporting requirements are met. These reporting errors delay the state's approval of the project and program list for FY '25. Specifically, those reports were supposed to be submitted to the state on a quarterly basis. The state last year in their review found those errors and mandated corrections before the process could continue for outstanding reimbursements and the upcoming year's approvals. To correct this, I'm going to be prioritizing meeting the pre-application deadline later this month. It is important that we keep on top of the schedule and the reporting requirements because of that is the source of the delay and can lead to the projects being pushed off or increases in costs. In addition to the internal policies in my department that will be enforced, this goes hand in hand with the CDBG ordinance that the mayor has submitted to better formalize this process and steering committee. Unfortunately, it's clear to me that both the mayor and the council here tonight did not get accurate reports as to the status of the program and on this issue specifically. I reached that conclusion by reviewing the correspondence from the previous director to the mayor and the council compared to that what was corresponded between the department and the state. Also, from watching the city council meeting where this item was discussed. Honestly, upon review, I don't even think other members of the department grasped that these errors were occurring or needed to be addressed. What I mean by that is that there were corrections we had to make to satisfy the guidelines for CDBG reporting to the state last year and when the state ordered us to. Nothing else appears to have been done. My findings from these last three weeks is that poor management review by the department, lack of staff training, and poor internal policies and procedures on my department led to CDBG reporting not being taken seriously or seriously reviewed by the director, and siloing of staff responsibilities hindered the department from realizing the broader issue. The next matter I bring to your attention is the ongoing redevelopment of the rear main street property. This pertains to another matter on your agenda this evening, so the Economic Development Committee wanted me to make sure that I go into some depth about the situation and proposed As you all know, the city had been engaged for a number of years now redeveloping that area. This began with the acquisition of the property and its subsequent demolition of the former factory building there. That is where we have now discovered the problems that we are currently facing originate. When the building was torn down in 2015, the decision was made to use demolition debris to fill on the site, and this debris was deeper than what was estimated by the engineers when surveys were done. The problem this creates is an unsuitable subsurface to build off of. I think it's important to go over how we got here and what I need, what I think needs to change in how we do business in my department specifically. First, I plan to review the original demo plan to better understand how and why these decisions were made at the time and also to determine if it was done correctly and did it meet the specifications at the time. On my first day, the head engineer for Fosse &amp; O'Neil called to inform me of the situation and asked how I wanted to proceed, quite the first day. A question I had then is why borrowings were not done as part of the due diligence on this project. This would have discovered this issue far earlier in the process instead of after work had already begun. Another issue I have with how this was put together by the previous director is that less than 5% for this project's budget was put aside for contingency when the standard is at least 10, ideally closer to 20%. The reason that this standard is because the situation is exactly like this. Compounding this was a serious communication issue. My department was notified in writing of this issue last September. However, that information was never passed on, and updates on the project to the mayor and other city departments made no mention and in some cases even contradicted what the engineers were reporting as to the status of the project. My first day, when this came to my attention, I notified the mayor. The mayor immediately then convened meetings with myself, the engineering firm for the project, the city engineer, the purchasing director, and the director of the DPW. We then discussed our options, and the mayor made the decision to stop the work until we had a clear path forward, which is, again, what is being presented to the council. I do think after a lengthy communication with the engineers that what has been presented is the best option available to us. What is being presented is a geotextile fabric that will cover the area where demolition debris was used and will effectively and evenly spread the shifting weight on top of it for moving vehicles. As I said, there is more I plan to look into so that I can better give an explanation of what happened that got us to this point because I think it's important for all of us to understand how and why these decisions were made, especially when they result in errors, to make sure we learn from our past mistakes. The way in which the existing structures that were onsite or demoed and the manner at which the site was filled were not conducive towards further redevelopment, and in fact, these decisions are the reason we're standing here today, reporting on this rather than continuing the project on schedule. The project is still moving forward, just with some delay until this is settled. Candidly, I can tell you that my first three weeks here, it's been a lot. Things are not smooth, and there are a lot of areas that need improvement. So I want to assure you all of a few things. First, I'm fully committed to getting things right and making sure the department runs correctly and effectively. Second, I'm willing to make tough calls for my department to make sure that that happens. And last, that the mayor and I are committed to keeping the city council informed every step along the way.
Thank you, Director. Okay, we're going to go back out of order to the reports of standing committees. We're going to go to Finance Committee, page two of our agenda. We're going to begin with item 11481. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171 thereof entitled Personnel to Add the Position of Human Resources Manager to the Compensation Schedule. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Madam President Protam. Leading to a motion, this is something we've previously taken up. It's already been through first printing. Just as a reminder, it's really just codifying a position change within the HR department that we've already approved, and so I move to send the ordinance amendment to second printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, seconded by Counselor Darryl Lowitz to send the ordinance amendment to second and final printing. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Maff?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Counselor Tisone?
Yeah.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11482, Discussions Regarding the City's Health Insurance Payments and Trust Fund. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Darryl Lowitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Leading to a motion, this item is in front of Finance, the Finance Committee to keep an open dialogue about the health insurance account. I recommend to, I recommend everyone to continue viewing the Finance Committee for updates as we will continue to discuss the item, but I felt there's information to bring to the full council at this time. In short, the health trust balance as of January 31st of this year is just over $1.4 million. This is over a million dollars higher than it was at the very end of last year on December 31st, 2025, where it was roughly at about $350,000. As outlined in our packet with the information from the auditor, this has occurred for two reasons. There are things called stop-loss reimbursements, which came in at roughly $440,000. This is, these are large claims that are covered by our stop-loss insurance policy. The auditor did note as well that he's hoping there is another payment for above the same, for $440,000, that comes before the end of the fiscal year, but he does not know when and when exactly the timing of that will be. The second error was monthly withholding journal entry that the payments from get moved over. This was not completed for several months due to the process being used at that time. This process has been updated with additional safeguards as well as reporting. The auditor mentioned in the email, Munoz does have automatic reporting capabilities that he's going to utilize to further add additional, again, safeguards. I do want to make it clear that the money was always in the city accounts, but was not being accounted for properly in the health trust balance. The auditor noted that a comfortable balance in the account would be between $1.8 and $2 million. While we're still short of this number, we are much more comfortable positioned than it previously was reported. Finance, as I stated, will continue to have this item on their calendar and receive updates from the mayor and the auditor, and at this point, I would move to remove the item from the full council calendar.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Darryl Lowitz, seconded by Counselor Mack to remove the item from the full council calendar with clarification that it remains on the Finance Committee calendar.
That is correct.
Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to add clarification.
Just be sure you're at a microphone if you want to come over this time.
Just to clarify, add to what Counselor Darryl Lowitz said, $440,000 from stop-loss insurance is wired into the city's accounts this morning, so that has also been received and added to that, as told by the council earlier this morning. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion from the council? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Maff?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Counselor Tisone?
Yeah.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11497, A Communication From the Mayor Regarding the Contract With Keller Partners Company for Grant Writing and Lobbying Services. Counselor Darryl Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is something the Finance Committee had asked for. It's just the contract that we had approved funding for in the past. Here's the documents outlining Keller Partners' role in the grant writing and lobbying services as well as these recommendations from other communities and municipalities in there. So it's there for everyone's information. The Finance Committee recommended, and I so move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Darryl Lowitz, seconded by Counselor Mack to place the communication on file. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darryl Lowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Maff?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Counselor Tisone?
Yeah.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 11499, An Order to Reappropriate $8,161,000 of Unexpected Bond Proceeds to Other Capital Projects. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Mack.
Thank you. This is an order to reappropriate $8,161,000 of unexpected bond proceeds to capital improvement projects. The list of the capital improvement projects is in your packet would be covered by these funds left from the Waterford Street School project. The items have to have a useful life of at least 30 years. These funds were borrowed in June of 2022. These funds are available based on the loan being taken out exceeding the amount needed. There is still a buffer that was left out from the $8.1 million to be set aside in case there is still need for any type of replacement or repairs to the elementary school. These funds cannot be used to pay against a loan, so it's wise for the city to use it towards some of our capital project items. The Finance Committee was in favor of the reappropriation of the loan funds for these projects, and I make a motion to move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Darryl Lowitz to approve the reappropriation of the funds and approve the order. This item requires a two-thirds vote, and we will do a roll call as we have on all of our items. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Mack?
I just want to say that if you look at our capital improvement projects, there's quite a few, and this is going to cover both City Hall, the schools, our new senior center. And although some of these projects might be specifically where we as a council might not have focused, that with tie-in law on these are the items that they think that's important for us to make repairs. City Hall hasn't had repairs done in many, many years, so I think this money is what being spent wisely, and I'm happy to support this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Further discussion? Counselor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President Protam. Counselor Mack touched on this, and I think it was well said, but I want to maybe dive a little deeper into it and really why the money is available. So when the city built our new elementary school, it was done through the MSBA or the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is a state agency that oversees every aspect of school construction, arranges the financing, and importantly, in our case, pays the lion's share of the cost. The part that is relevant to us tonight is the financing component that was previously mentioned. So the city, guided by the MSBA, issues bonds and or borrows this money for the project, projected total cost of the construction prior to the first shovel going in the ground. That number, the dollar figure, is where the expertise of the MSBA comes in, right? They do this throughout the state all the time. From there, the construction proceeds, and the city is reimbursed by the state. For our project, there were two factors. The state reimburses us for 80% of the reimbursable costs. They didn't have to go to that 80%, but they did, and that's the maximum possible reimbursement rate, and obviously impacted our side of the total costs, which included non-reimbursable expenses. The other piece is twofold. The actual construction costs came in under budget, and contingency funds, a normal process for a large project like this, where additional or unanticipated costs may arise in our case, they weren't wholly used. So simply put, the process through the MSBA facilitates the borrowing of these funds for the amount they determine. No bidding can occur and no project can proceed with the MSBA until those funds are secured. So because this project finished under budget, that's what's created the availability of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haglund. Further discussion? Counselor Harder?
Yes, Madam President. I have been on this council for over a decade. In that time, we have always been cash-strapped and always playing catch-up with capital improvements and maintenance. Usually, when I have been asked to vote for spending like this, it's because something has broken dramatically failed, and we don't have any options. The problem with that is it's no way to do things. We all know letting things sit and get worse only increase costs and make a big breakdown more likely, which only costs more to fix when it becomes an emergency. I'd like to highlight one example of this on this list. The front entrance of City Hall. We can all see the steps shifting, the brickwork falling apart, handicap door failing, the stairs pushing away from the building, and the rust oozing out of the columns. I was a barber, but you don't need to be an engineer to see there is a problem here. We have two options: do nothing, and eventually we will need to put up yellow tape blocking off the front entrance while we try to figure out how to find what at that point will probably be millions of dollars to fix. Or we can maintain what we have at a functional cost. I am not 100% behind every single item on this list, but I am 100% behind as being proactive with maintenance and improvements because what I have seen far too often and been asked to vote on is what happens when we don't do this. We end up being forced to spend far more money, tear down buildings, build new ones, and have emergencies. So I will be voting for this, and I hope that that passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Harder. Further discussion? Counselor Brooks?
Thank you, Madam President Protam. We are being asked today to
We are being asked today to approve the spending of over $8 million in capital projects. That's a lot of money. It's money coming from the issuance of debt in 2022 to be paid back over 30 years or until 2052. It would be easy for me to say, sure, no problem, because I will get the benefit of the spending but not have to deal with the payments. Quite frankly, I will be very surprised to still be here in Gardner above the ground in 2052. For me, the issue is what I am leaving to my children and grandchildren. Is it fair to them? Is it what I want to leave as a legacy? The money has already been borrowed and has to be spent in compliance with state laws. We rushed the borrowing of these funds in order to avoid higher interest rates, which was a good plan. Unfortunately, the financial information from the new elementary school project management team had not been updated to show lower-than-budgeted construction costs, so we borrowed too much and now have $8 million in excess funds from the project. Mass. General Watch after 40, Section 20, says, "If the balance remains after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized, the balance may be appropriated." So my first question, is the new elementary school project complete? Are we totally done and the project closed? I would hate to have this order approved only to find that there are issues at the new school that require further spending. Next, I understand that the list of projects being funded have been vetted by the Capital Improvements Planning Committee, and I have no doubt that they are necessary projects. However, I do have a few more questions. The first project on the list is for the Gardner High School auditorium upgrades. I understand that the auditorium has been closed for most of this school year while undergoing major renovations. My second question, are the funds in this order being allocated for additional work not included in the current renovation plans? Or are they to cover cost overruns in the current project? Or are they supplanting or replacing funds that the school committee had already committed to the project? If this $1.5 million is to supplant or replace money previously committed by the school committee, is it in the best interest of the city as a whole? Or are we bailing out one department at the expense of others? The second project on the list is $50,000 for bathroom upgrades at Gardner High School. Now, I will acknowledge, Madam President, Pro Tem, that the new high school is 50 years old and in need of major upgrades. But, come on. Question three, does it make sense to borrow for 30 years to pay for a $50,000 bathroom upgrade? The $50,000 bathroom upgrade cost is well below the $150,000 threshold for capital improvements that can count toward net school spending, meaning within the school budget. I would ask the same question for the $80,000 for Gardner High School stair tread replacement and the $50,000 for Gardner Middle School storefront replacement. There are several other projects at $200,000 or less on the list covering other city departments. Question four, shouldn't we be finding a way to cover those smaller projects within the annual budget rather than using a 30-year loan? Just as I expect the school department to cover some of their projects under net school spending, so I expect small capital projects for other city departments to be funded under the city budget. And by the way, it is acceptable to use free cash because capital projects are considered one-time expenses. Finally, we can find it easy to fall into the delusion that we suddenly have found money that we can use to cure what ails us. The debt service on this loan is already baked into future budgets until 2052. We can approve this reappropriation without any additional financial hit to the city. So here is my final question. If this order for $8,161,000 had not been a reappropriation of already borrowed funds, but instead had been a new loan order for an additional $8,161,000 of borrowing over 30 years, would we be so willing to approve it? We, including our children and grandchildren, are going to pay this debt for another 27 years. Do we really want to spend 30 years paying for a range of smaller projects that happen to be next in line on the capital improvements list? Are we missing an opportunity to do something transformational for the city? City Hall has already been mentioned. City Hall, the building, will soon be pushing 100 years, and we can expect no outside financial assistance for its rehabilitation. Should we direct more money there? The Waterford Community Center is radically changing its purpose from school to community center. Should we focus on that building? The stormwater system is getting old and is running at or over capacity in some locations, such as Union Square. Should we push funding in that direction? I believe we can do better, and I will not be supporting the order as it is currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Councilor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President, Pro Tem. And if it's in order, I'd like the mayor to address this. According to the Capital Improvement Planning Meeting on July 31st, when this first started being discussed, my understanding was, under the directive of the mayor, that the $8 million, $4 million was supposed to be targeted for city expenses, and $4 million was supposed to be targeted for school expenses, which is how this list became about. So it wasn't just supposed to be specifically, you know, targeted just for the city funds. So if it's appropriate, I'd like to hear from the mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Mack. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam President, Pro Tem. To answer Councilor Mack's question on the 50-50, the reason why we tried to get as close to $4 million and $4 million was because the money was taken out originally for the school building, so for the benefit of the school department. That's why we looked at trying to get as close to that. In the end, if you look at the total amount of the loan that's left over, it's closer to $8.5 million, which is why the final request is about $8.1. Around, it ended up being closer to a 60-40 split. But that was based off of the list that Tie &amp; Bond, our city engineering firm, and Fasen O'Neill, our other on-call engineers, took a look at our capital improvement list that's annually submitted by the Capital Improvements Planning Committee to the city council, voted on by the city council and signed by the mayor on an annual basis. This was most recently done in October. To say of these projects that are on the list, which one of these are considered 30-year lifespan lists, the way that Bond Council, our city's legal council that approves all of our, approves and oversees all of our interactions with our loans, our bonds, our debt service, because there are several general laws that relate to those matters, what, they required a proof that the projects would be 30 years. And that could either be done by finding warranties on a specific project or by a stamped engineer's letter that say, in the average course of business, this type of a project has an average lifespan of 30 years. And if we did not have specific quotes, that estimate by an engineer had to have a PE stamp, a professional engineer's stamp that was associated with it. The letter from Tie &amp; Bond is included in your packet this evening, that it said of all of the items on the capital improvement list, these are the items that had a 30-year lifespan or minimum. After that, the items were prioritized based off of lack of other grant funding available for those types of projects. I'll use the underground storage tanks of the DPW as an example of that. There are specific brownfield remediation grants or the state UST fund or things of that nature that's available for that type of work, where you're not going to find that work for repainting the front of City Hall and doing building upgrades here. So those were the different factors that went into coming up with those plans that were there and where the 50-50 split came from. The school department's projects that they have included in their share of this funding either came from their submissions to the capital improvement plan, of which many of those are on that list, or projects that they saw just as general building upgrades. As has been said earlier, where these had to be a 30-year project, the general laws have specific requirements as to what can be considered a 30-year project and what cannot be considered a 30-year project. Any project that has paving, paving can only be done in a loan of up to 10 years. Any project that's associated with an outdoor recreational facility that's not a building can only be done for up to 15 years, and any equipment purchases can only be done for up to 20 years. If you look at the original submission that the school department asked us to consider, that included updating the clock system at Gardner High School. That was considered equipment, so that could not be something that was done with that, so that's why the engineers backed that up. Similar was done with updating the, we, you know, looked at whether or not to do a sprinkler system at the new community center. That was considered equipment, so that was something that got taken out by Bond Council and the engineering firms. So things of that is how all of this got broken down and to determine what projects made it in the end and where that split came to between the city and the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Mayor?
To add to the other questions that the council has raised here, I tried to take notes as best I could, so if I miss anything, I am happy to answer any other questions that may come up. The question on is the school done? The school is done. We do have two open purchase orders that are already allocated for in our Munis reporting system. We believe that we'll be able to close those out, but we're just waiting for the final contractor okay to sign off on those, in which case we actually think it might be a little, slightly higher than what we're currently projecting. So that is the questions there. If there is any other bills that come in, we already have those funded with the severe cushion in the open purchase orders that are there by a couple hundred thousand. But we, the school is done. We don't anticipate any further costs on that. We're just waiting for the PL closeout process to go forward with that. The auditorium work that Councilor Brooks mentioned, that is the work to replace the funding that, project was originally funded out of the school's school choice revolving account. That's funding that the school department receives from the Commonwealth for all school choice students that are coming into Gardner as almost a tuition payment, for lack of a better term. That funding can be used to fund either regular budgetary operations, can be used to fund capital improvement projects, or can be used for other projects as the school department sees fit under the purview of the school committee. This last school's, school-approved budget that went through the regular budgetary process for fiscal '25 did have some salaries that were in that. We're in the process of lowering the amount of salaries that are being taken out of this fund, because this is really a one-time fund account, because we don't know how many students each year are going to come into the district via school choice. So the current FY '26 budget proposal that we're working on right now actually reduces the amount of annual salaries that are coming out of this one-time fund budget by about $600,000. So we're working towards that goal in that area there. However, that's the account that if there's any surprise repairs, any surprise maintenance, any surprise costs that the school department may incur, that's the fund that is available almost as a backup fund, if you will, or the school department version of a rainy day fund that's there that if something comes up. Most significantly, that account gets looked at when there's issues of outer district special education placements, where we have a student in Gardner that's needs are too high-level for us to be able to handle in district with our students, so we have to send them to other locations across the state. That could be anywhere from the Sizer School to Deveraux to specialized agricultural schools in certain cases. If a student wants to study agriculture, they're considered a Gardner student, and we'd have to pay that fee there. That's our backup account where we can pay some of those. There's been years where we've taken hits of up to $700,000 in one year, and that comes mid-year. So having that cushion in the back is the good practice for that, based off of the percentage of the annual school operating budget that's there. So the funds are being used to replace the original school choice funds that were paying for the auditorium renovations to replenish the school choice count so that we have the standard cushions based off of the best practices that if a surprise cost comes up mid-year, we'll be able to cover those costs. If there's any other questions that I missed in my chicken scratch notes that I took real quick while the council was talking, I'm also happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, Pro Tem.
Further discussion? Councilor Dernalowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be in support of this. I was in support of the Finance Committee. The things, items that are on the capital improvement plan, some that are now here have, some of that there are 10-plus years and just stagnant there and don't get accomplished. As Councilor Harder mentioned, we should be fixing things proactively, not waiting for things to break to a point where they have to be completely replaced. I do have, you know, talk about leaving this to our kids and our grandkids. There's a big, large focus here on the school, on the Greenwood Pool. While taking piece by piece, some of these are smaller items, but the high school with the, with the projects, it's 1.5 million, excuse me, $3.5 million alone, plus the middle school is over almost 1.25 million. The community center is getting, sorry, quickly here, the back of the napkin math, but close to a million, over a million dollars. Greenwood Pool, nearly a quarter million dollars. And the City Hall that was mentioned is about $1.5 million improvement. So I think those are being made, and those are what need to be made, and I look forward to see these improvements being done in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Councilor Haglund?
Thank you, Madam President, Pro Tem. It has been a discussion and debate. I think it's important that when we're, you know, looking at money this big, we have these questions and we have this discussion. I think, you know, for me personally, I really appreciate Counselor Harder's remarks as well. I filed, you know, two proposals looking at old buildings that fell into disrepair, and really were beyond repair, and what can we do with those now? And they're too far gone, so I like the proactive nature of this. I like the spread that this presents as well, between schools, which serves a number of our community members perhaps the most. The community center, I think, is going to be transformational for this city. I think it's going to be a huge opportunity for us. And again, it's going to serve a wide range of our residents, so I think investing in that is an incredibly important thing for us to do, and I think this is a great opportunity to do that. And then economic development is really covered in this as well with Riau Main. So we cover different areas. I think we've spread this well. I think we're really getting the most bang for our buck as much as we can, because the money has been slated. It has been borrowed. And I think where we're prepared for that 30 years of the length of this loan is someone who, you know, barring any unforeseen incident, will be living here for 30 years. You know, I'm, I am comfortable with this and in taking that on. And so I will be supporting this tonight. You know, I, I'm excited about this opportunity. I think we've had a lot of vetting of these projects between Tie &amp; Bond, between the Bond Council, between the school committee, between the city council, the Finance Committee. So I'm pretty confident in this process, and I'll be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haglund. Is there further discussion? Councilor Brooks?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, Pro Tem. To start, I'm not disputing that about these projects being 30-year projects. I understand they're 30-year projects. I understand that they've been vetted. I guess I just have a problem with this, I have two problems. One problem specifically, I guess, is with the school auditorium, because the school committee did choose to spend school choice funds on it, and now we're allowing them to backfill. I'm looking ahead at next year's budget and saying, okay, we're going to be having to swallow, I believe, a large increase in school transportation next year because there's a new contract. And so we already are going to, in next year's budget, going to have to be finding ways to give the school department more money. Could these funds be used somewhere else? That's, I guess, my question. And, and more generally, I guess, because this is $8 million we didn't expect to get, and we're not going to be in a position in the next 10 years to do additional borrowing of this size, I guess I would have preferred for us to have taken a step back and said, okay, here's the list, but is there anything, and I use the word transformational, anything big that we could have done or anything else we could have done to use some of these funds and found other sources for some of the smaller projects? And I know that doesn't free up a lot of money, but it's just, it's just, I'm looking at it from a different point of view. That's all. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. Further discussion? Okay, the, the motion, just to repeat it, because we've had a lengthy debate, the motion was made to adopt the order to reappropriate $8,161,000 of unexpected bond proceeds to other capital projects, made by Councilor Mack, seconded by Councilor Dernalowitz. This is a two-thirds vote. It needs eight votes to pass, and we're going to do a roll call vote as we have on all motions as we have a council on the phone this evening. And if there's no further discussion, the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
No.
Councilor Kretkomea?
Yes.
Councilor Dernalowitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councilor Tisone?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one no, the motion passes. Now, to continue out of order, we are going to head to the last item on our agenda on page three. Item under Economic and Community Development Committee, Reports from Standing Committees, item 11498. An ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 7, thereof entitled Boards and Commissions, as amended by item 11289, as enacted on December 16th, 2024, to add a new Section 6 to be entitled Community Development Block Grant Steering Committee. Is there a motion? Councilor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. I'd like to make a motion to send the item to first printing.
Second?
Motion made by Councilor Heath, seconded by Councilor Darnallawitz to send the item to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Brooks?
Thank you. I just have a question, and I apologize for having to ask it here. I didn't get a chance to ask it after the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting. The membership on this committee, there are five members? Is that how I understand it?
On what?
On this committee?
On the--
That we're establishing?
I'm sorry, on the Boards and Commissions?
The Community Development Block Grant Steering Committee will have how many members? Five?
There's going to be five members on the committee.
Five members, okay. That's right. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darnallawitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councilor Tisone?
Yes.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. There is no unfinished business and matters for reconsideration. There is no new business. Council comments and remarks? Are there any council comments and remarks? Councilor Mack?
I just want to make everyone aware that February is Heart Awareness Month. You will notice that the ladies of the council tonight are wearing a shade of red to support the ongoing need for awareness. Since the 1950s, heart disease has been the leading cause of death for both men and women, women who often don't give enough attention to their heart health. This is an important reminder to practice good heart and cardiovascular care for yourself and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mack. Are there further council comments and remarks? Okay, if there is nothing further, I'll adjourn a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer.
Submove.
Motion made by Councilor Brooks, seconded by Councilor Cormier. All those in favor say, ooh, nope. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Brooks?
Yes.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor Darnallawitz?
Yes.
Councilor Harder?
Yes.
Councilor Heath?
Yes.
Councilor Haglund?
Yes.
Councilor Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Councilor Tisone?
Yes.
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed be the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent which we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Alham. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.